All right, let's get this thing started. Good evening and welcome to the City Council meeting. Let the record reflect that the regular meeting of the Santee City Council is now called to order. For the roll call, we will also let the record show that Mayor Minto and Councilmember Hall are absent. Myself, the Vice Mayor McNellis, Councilmember Koval, and Councilmember Trotter are present and appear to be accounted for. I think so. Yeah? Okay. Just making sure. Legislative invocation and Pledge of Allegiance will happen tonight. Tonight, the invocation will be given by Reverend Casey Marie Pendle with Summit Unitarian Universalist Fellowship. And the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by... Oh, Steve. Congratulations. Let's start... Oh, I will actually give a quick background on Casey. Reverend Casey Marie Pendle is the Lead Minister with Summit Unitarian Universalist Fellowship. She has been with them for two years and received her degree from Medville Lombard Theological School. She is also currently studying at Wesley Theological Seminary in their leadership in a Broken World doctoral track. A few will come on up to the lectern right there and lead us in the prayer.
Vice Mayor and Councilmembers, thank you for letting me be here and lead this invocation this evening. Whether you are joining us in the room today or watching on Santee TV, you are whole, you are holy, you are loved, and you are so welcome here. Spirit of life and love, all that is known and unknown, that divine power that goes by many names, we are grateful for the opportunity to be in this room today. We know that the work that our Santee City Council members does is an important part of how this community functions. We hope as we go through business this evening that it can be guided by the sacred power of hope and compassion and love for this community. We hope that we can be guided by a joint hope and reverence for the work that gets done to build this community, to make it the foundational place that we can all be. We ask for guidance and compassion and patience. And as always, we work to be in a place of love and compassion together. Amen, shalom, salaam, ashay, namaste, and blessed be.
Thank you. Steve?
Everyone, please join me with the Pledge of Allegiance by facing the flag and repeating after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Fantastic. All right. Tonight, we have a proclamation for September 29th through October 3rd as National Manufacturing Week. And Councilmember Trotter is going to be presenting this proclamation. James Sly is here to represent the East County Economic Development Council, and he's here to receive it. Come on up, bud.
Mr. Sly, why don't you join me up front, sir? Yeah, exactly. Isaiah, tonight, you guys, we have a proclamation for National Manufacturing Week, which you see up on the dates. There's September 29th through October 3rd of 2025. So I've got a proclamation here, and James is gonna take it from us tonight. Says, whereas National Manufacturing Week is exerted annually to acknowledge the significant contributions of manufacturing to the national, state, and local economy, as well as the workforce development. And whereas National Manufacturing Week is exerted from September 29th to October 3rd, 2025, with coordinated events across the nation designed to increase public awareness of modern manufacturing and a broad range of career opportunities this industry provides. And whereas the East County Economic Development Council... This guy. Is hosting its 10th Annual East County Manufacturing Expo on September 30th, 2025, to showcase the region's manufacturers' outreach to the future workforce and career opportunities in manufacturing and provide educational and business resources. Whereas California currently has the largest number of manufacturers in the nation, with over 36,000 firms served by 1.2 million workers representing virtually every manufacturing sector. And the East County Manufacturing Expo represents the largest event recognizing the manufacturing industry in San Diego and Imperial County regions. And whereas the Santee community is fortunate to be the home for over 100 manufacturing companies, which represent an important segment of the local economy, contributing both highly skilled and high-paying jobs. Now therefore, I, Dustin Trotter, on behalf of the Santee City Council, I do by here proclaim that the week of September 29th through October 3rd, 2025, as National Manufacturing Week in accordance to the City of Santee and encourage all citizens to celebrate the importance of manufacturing with the community and recognize all contributions of the Economic Development Council and the support of this industry. All right, thanks, James. Do you want to say a few words?
I'll just say that to Councilmember Trotter's point, this is our 10th Annual Manufacturing Expo. Santee has been a supporter since its inception. It will be occurring on September 30th from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at Quea Macca College. There are 87 manufacturers registered now, and it is usually the biggest in the country, but it'll definitely be the biggest in San Diego. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Now we will move on to the consent calendar. Are there any items to be added, reordered, or deleted?
None from me.
Councilmember Trotter?
No, sir.
Okay. Do we have... Oops. Do we have any speakers on this?
We do... We have a speaker on Item 2 and Item 6.
Okay. Let's pull Item 2 and Item 6.
Motion to approve some consent calendar other than Items 2 and 6.
Second.
Motion to approve, and we have a second. Let's vote.
Motion carries unanimously with council present.
Item number 2, approval of meeting minutes of the Santee City Council for special meetings of July 8th, 10th, and 11th, 2025, August 4th, 2025, August 4, 2025, August 12, 2025, regular meeting of August 13, 2025, and special meeting of August 20th, 2025. Truth?
Hi there. You know, as many meetings as you guys had, I don't have that much to say about the minutes. They were mostly accurate, so I just wanted to point out, August 12th, Ron was 10 minutes late. Now he's absent. August 20th, Laura was absent. I'm hoping you had a good excuse. And of six regular meetings, Rob made the motion four times, Dustin once, and John once. Dustin now. Ron and Laura, I have noticed, have really gone downhill in the battle for motion supremacy, and I guess that's what we're gonna call the game. Good thing the only prize is a potential public recognition. Thank you.
Do you have a motion on Item Number 2?
I'll make a motion.
I will second that.
Let's vote.
Motion carries unanimously with council present.
Item Number 6, adoption of a resolution authorizing the purchase of 20 clear polycarbonate panels from E Plastics for the Town Center Community Park Sports Complex area soccer field improvements and authorizing the appropriation of $96,840 from General Fund Reserves. Truth?
Okay. Something about some walls for the field, so I just want to know, did staff underestimate on the purchase of wall panels and why? If I'm understanding this kind of misleading item correctly... I don't know why I said that. Maybe I changed my mind later when I wrote that. Somebody reported they couldn't see the soccer fields from the stands. Staff went to go quickly, buy some new clear wall panels, saying they shouldn't cost more than $50,000, and then they suddenly needed $38,000 more to spend. Why is that? Why couldn't you come close? I think I actually have said here before in probably a lot of places that you should always overestimate, because the chances are the price is gonna increase by the time you get to buying something. And question, did nobody test the filled sightline when first installing the bleachers? Thank you.
Motion to approve... This is Item 6, right?
Correct.
Second.
Let's vote.
Fulfilling my quota.
Motion carries unanimously with council present.
All right. Now, non-agenda public comment?
Yes, sir. We have three speakers. The first is Jennifer Lacrosse.
My name is Jennifer Lacrosse. I'm a resident of Santee. Thank you for letting us speak today. I'm also a 5th grade teacher and the Safety Patrol Advisor at Carlton Oaks. I'm here on my own behalf today. I have a kid who goes to the school, and I have children who have graduated now to West Hills. So I'm here today because I'm concerned for the safety students and staff and families at Carlton Oaks. The intersection of DeVos Drive, Weathersfield, and Carlton Oaks parking lot is a safety hazard. I'm asking you to consider a three-way stop at this intersection, as well as a designated employee, to direct traffic and cross our students and families safely. In order to better explain the mess that is this intersection, I have a diagram, whiteboard. It's kind of small, but traffic moves actually in 12 directions at this intersection with only one permanent stop sign. So here's our school right here. Carlton Oaks Boulevard is down here. This is Weathersfield, and this is DeVos. Here's the entrance. So there are two lanes to enter the parking lot here. The first over here is one direction, two directions. This one also sometimes turns... Oops, sorry. This one also sometimes turns here. This one also goes straight and makes a turn. There's no designated stop sign there. My patroler is here, here, and here, and I have a sergeant here. These are 10- to 12-year-olds who are expected to direct traffic with one teacher. I have this lane that can go straight, this lane that can turn. I have this lane that can go across here and here. It can also go down here, and it can also go here. This lane is super special, because it actually doesn't stop when the stop signs are out. It continues to move. So even when my patroler here, here, and here have their stop signs out, and there's a teacher in the middle, this lane continues to go, which confuses these cars here, because they think that they can continue to go. So a lot of times what happened is a car will go here, and a teacher will have to step in front of the car. A lot of times, the driver will yell at the teacher, because... Or even honestly, I've had 10- and 11-year-olds get cursed at and screamed at here, crying at me after school. I've also had people block the intersection here, here, and here, so the teacher has to go and stand and direct students outside of the crosswalk, which is the safe zone. I invite you, 246, we get out every single day. Intermediate dismissal is absolutely insane. I invite you to come and watch it. It is something I have heard from parents, teachers. We are all extremely concerned, and I hope you consider either a three-way stop, a grown-up, to direct this traffic who's there, because teachers don't get down until, you know, 2 minutes after dismissal, because they're dismissing their students. I really urge you to consider the safety of the kids here before it's too late. Thank you.
The next speaker is Truth.
Hold on, actually. We got some more information on that.
Jennifer?
Not... No, not from you, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I was looking at staff. Yeah. Can we get some more information on that? Just look into that for us?
Yep.
And bring it back up? Thank you. Next item?
The next speaker is Truth.
Hey, Item Truth here. I'm sorry to create quotas for Laura, but I did notice, yeah, you've got a lot of empty seats near you. I feel like maybe you could just take that one. Nice to see the city going my type of direction, because I can dig better buzz in 85C coming. Besides the city needing Asian pastries and needing good coffee open later than 2:00 p.m., also why they're needed, because the city has no events for the 20- to 30-year-old generations. Nowhere cool to take photos in front of, no cool hangouts, and no cool music or art events. That's my opinion. There are too many events for young children. A city's marketing manager should be considering all generations and familial statuses. Until then, people like myself find their fun elsewhere, which results in less tax dollars for the city budget. You're welcome. The city needs safer crosswalks, not just at schools, but at all major intersections. And that means wider crosswalks with fresh, high-visibility paint or special paving, and in roadway warning lights or LED crosswalks or crosswalk illuminators. I actually did research, so there's three different kinds. For the upcoming likely Amazon warehouse, why are there no traffic solutions by the city, Sandag, or Caltrans when this falls under goods movement? Perhaps they should pay for highway expansion in the form of mitigation fees. After all, the developer had enough money to buy some political union minions, including corrupt Kelvin from Leuna, who admitted to the union agreement, which is always anything but local. Again, traffic, I am against the two future stupid, dangerous roundabouts. Only crazy North County believes these junk ideas work. The first excuse to implement roundabouts was to stop traffic collisions. Carlsbad has proven that doesn't happen. A May 11th Sandago Union Tribune story entitled "Local Stats Show North County Roundabouts Perform Poorly" said, quote, "Traffic stats for two roundabouts along Highway 101 indicate the devices may be causing more problems than they solve." Collisions have skyrocketed at a roundabout where Carlsbad Boulevard intersects with State Street. After fewer than one collision annually before the installation, there were 28 collisions in 2020 through 2024 after the roundabout. Also performing poorly is a roundabout in Encinitas, end quote. Now, the second excuse to implement roundabouts is to increase the flow of traffic. Two issues. One, does that follow the state and Sandag agenda of reducing VMT and GHGs? No. Two, much more important and real, cars don't stop at roundabouts, which means they don't stop for pedestrians at crosswalks that are always too close to the roundabouts. Both drivers and pedestrians can't even see each other, because roundabouts have visual blind spots at their center, usually filled with stupid plants. Roundabouts have become the only hammer for every traffic now. Just because the state gives a grant for nonsense doesn't mean a city should sell out and destroy itself. And at a recent meeting, John said, "These people at the meeting have been here all day. We shouldn't eat if they're not going to eat." Well, he forgot about all the times at Sandag where he was stuffing his face while people like me were starving. How dare he? He's lucky he's not here. Thank you.
The next speaker is Brenda Hammond.
Hi. So here's all the colors, but the white one is stuck in my window, so... And then I want to say, don't drive on the freeway with balloons, because they might get in the way of your blind spot. And you might try... You might almost hit somebody. I would like to share this quote with you that was handed to me, and it was handed to me for me and maybe Truth. It doesn't talk about... When you handed it to me, it was for me to keep my silliness up at council meetings, because it helps you guys smile a little bit, right? Hopefully. Break things up a little bit. Be who you are and say what you feel, because those who mind don't matter. And those who matter don't mind. That's a quote by Dr. Seuss. And then, in another city, I said, "The people are complaining about ICE working with their police department," which is not true. So I said, "You need to get these for these people. This is a stress ball." This is from the Sheriff's Department. But I said, "You should get your city on there." But you guys already have the Sheriff's Department, so see if you can get some of these from Kelly Martinez, which I met the other day. Thank you.
Thank you.
No further speakers?
All right. Moving on to Item Number 8, public hearing. Public hearing for tentative map TM 2024-0001 and development review permit DR 2024-0001 for a multifamily residential development consisting of 285 units and related site improvements on 22.17-acre parcel located at the terminus of Park Center Drive and west of Cottonwood Avenue at APN 381-051-1800 in the R14 median-high-density residential zone, and finding the project is subject to California Quality Act Section 15162 and 15164. Addendum 2 and EIR. Let's hear the report.
So, good evening, Vice Mayor and Councilmembers. Tonight, Rachel Lindabarki, who's an Associate Planner with the Planning and Building Department, will be giving the presentation for Cottonwood and Park Project, also known as Park View.
Thank you. And good evening, Vice Mayor and Council. This item before you tonight is a 285-unit multifamily residential project proposed on a vacant 22.17-acre site, and it's located at the terminus of Park Center Drive, just west of Cottonwood Avenue. In 2022, the city rezoned to the site through the Housing Element Rezone Program Implementation Project from R22 to R14, which allows 14- to 22-dwelling units per gross acre. The project as proposed complies with the density requirements. Surrounding zoning includes medium-density residential to the north and east, flood-open space to the south, and park-open space to the west. Adjacent land uses include the county-owned parcel encompassing the San Diego River to the south, city-owned parcels including Town Center Community Park East to the west, residential uses and Cottonwood Avenue to the east, and Park Center Drive and vacant land to the north. This view is looking west towards the project site from Cottonwood Avenue. And this view is looking south towards the project site at the terminus of Park Center Drive. The proposed residential condominium development project would include three architectural styles, the veranda, the loggia, and the terrace. Unit sizes would range from 1,342 to 2,074 square feet and include 2 to 4 bedrooms. And each unit would include a 2-car garage. The buildings would feature earth-toned stucco finishes, wood siding, and tile roofs. Onset improvements would include guest parking, recreational areas, including playgrounds, a community pool, view and pocket parks, landscaping, and a 12-foot wide trail along the San Diego River. A total of 56,000 square feet of private open space would be provided to residents in the form of patios and decks. 101,800 square feet of common open space would be provided in the form of parks, playgrounds, green space, and a community pool. Additionally, a 100-foot buffer from the edge of riparian habitat associated with the San Diego River would be established within the project site and be managed for natural biological value as part of the city's preserve system. Street improvements are proposed along Cottonwood Avenue, Magnolia Avenue, and Park Center Drive, including the addition of a Park Center Drive roundabout. And now, I am briefly going to pass the presentation over to Minji May, our Principal Traffic Engineer, who's gonna go over the Magnolia Avenue improvements.
Thank you, Rachel. Yeah, I'll address the traffic issue briefly. With this project, it will force generate some new traffic to the area. But not only that, because this project will connect Park Center Drive and the existing Walker Trails Drive to Magnolia. So some of the traffic, existing traffic, north of this project will also take this connection now, once this is built, of course. So the most significant impact will happen towards the northbound left turn at the intersection of Magnolia and the Walker Trails Drive. As you can see, this is existing condition. The northbound left turn, there is a single left turn lane with 120 feet storage. With the addition of the project, it will create 126 left turns in the PM peak hours, which is the highest volume during the day. But not only that, because the diverted traffic from the north of the project, the total left turn volume for the PM peak hours at this location will reach 314 cars. That's a lot of cars. The existing single left turn lane with 120 feet storage will not be sufficient to handle that. Therefore, staff propose that the project is conditioned to improve or modify the intersection, as shown on this slide, to include a dual left turn lane for the northbound approach. So that will provide a total of 250,000... 250 feet storage. That will be able to handle the additional left turn traffic sufficiently. So basically, that's really the most significant traffic impact to traffic operations. I think based on our analysis, that will address the issue. I'll be happy to answer any questions on this issue.
Minji, can you go back... Or James, can you go back one slide real quick to the existing condition?
I'm sorry. Yeah.
Okay. So there's a bike lane that runs on that curb there. Now. Go back to the new one, James? I'm sorry. Thank you. So is that still a bike lane, Minji?
Oh, yeah. Everything else, the bike lanes still remain. Everything else is the same.
Okay.
And so how much capacity of cars does that add? I missed that in your presentation.
For the left turn?
Yes.
That should handle the proposed traffic.
And you said it was something like 314? So it'll handle 314 exactly, or a little bit more than that, or...
But this traffic in your signal operations is not a kind of precise sign, so to speak, because we can adjust timing more or less. So, yeah, it should be handled that sufficiently.
Well, if you can measure 314 cars, how come you can't say how much this will do? How many cars?
Well, the 300, of course, 314, that's based on the projection, based on... Because this project itself generates 126, and the remainder of that come from surrounding areas. But based on our analysis, that volume can be sufficiently handled by this configuration.
And you're talking about the peak hour?
The peak hour. The worst time. The peak hour, the worst time of the day.
And what is the worst time of day?
PM peak hours.
Like 5 o'clock or?
5 to 6, yeah.
5 to 6, okay.
Anything? Okay, so that's, I see the improvements for the, basically for entering into the project. What about leaving the project? People trying to get out of there?
Right, leaving the project is not really a big an issue because this, the northbound left turn, because of the, you look at existing configuration, it's limited by the amount of storage, which is only 120 feet long. And for leaving the project, you know, going south, say, going eastbound toward south, there's plenty of room for that. Right.
Go back to the next picture. Okay, so it's still just one lane going left and one lane turning right. Yeah, I don't see how it's. You've got all these cars that are coming in, but you don't have cars going out. That doesn't make.
Right, another reason for the right turns is you can also make right turns on red. So that also adds a capacity. For the left turns, you had to wait for your turn.
Right. Fair enough. All right, Councilmember.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to move forward with some elevations. So here's the site placement for the veranda at Parkview units, which would be located along Cottonwood Avenue and Walker Trails Drive. These are, there are 54 units, and they are proposed as two stories with a maximum height of 27 and a half feet. These are the elevation renderings. The buildings would be in three, four, and six plexes. Here we have the site placement for the loggia at Parkview units, which would be located in the center of the development and adjacent to the San Diego River. There are 136 of these units. They're proposed at three stories with a maximum height of 36 and a half feet. Here are the elevation renderings. These buildings would be six, seven, eight, nine, 10, and 11 plexes. Last, we have the placement of the terrace at Parkview units, which would be located closest to Town Center Community Park East, with some of the units being adjacent to the San Diego River. There are 95 of these units, which are proposed at three stories with a maximum height of 36 feet. And here are the elevation renderings. These buildings would be five, six, seven, nine, and 10 plexes. As part of the Housing Element Rezone, the city certified a final program Environmental Impact Report, or PEIR. On October 12, 2022, the previously certified PEIR adequately addressed the potential environmental impacts of the project. However, minor technical changes warrant the preparation of an addendum to the PEIR. An addendum and environmental checklist have been prepared to support the minor technical changes and additions pursuant to California Environmental Quality Act, or CEQA Guidelines Section 15162 and 15164. A CEQA public review period is not required for the preparation of an addendum. Adjacent property owners within 300 feet of the project site were notified of the project through a courtesy notice. The notice provided project information and invited neighbors to provide feedback. Staff received comments from an adjacent property owner pertaining to the removal of an onsite cottonwood tree and requested to change trees proposed along Cottonwood Avenue in order to match the Walker Trail subdivision trees. The applicant considered options for the protection or transplantation of the cottonwood tree and discussed them with the adjacent property owner. But due to the site constraints and the tree species' anticipated lack of successful transplant, the tree is proposed to be removed. The applicant has offered to plant a new cottonwood tree, if appropriate, within the 100 foot buffer, and has agreed to modify the trees along Cottonwood Avenue to match the trees installed as part of the Walker Trail subdivision, and no other comments were received. Therefore, staff recommends the city council conduct and close the public hearing, approve the addendum to the PEIR, and approve the project by adopting the resolutions before you. This concludes staff's presentation. The applicant is present tonight to speak on behalf of the project and answer any questions from council. Staff is also available to answer any questions.
Six. The first speaker is Truth, or do you want the, with the, I believe the applicant had a presentation?
Applicants have a presentation if that is appropriate.
And then as a public hearing applicant, they do get 15 minutes for their presentation.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, council members, thank you for your time and consideration tonight. Very excited to be here tonight. I want to also take the opportunity to thank the amazing staff here. This is personally my first project here in the City of Santee, not City Ventures first. But I've thoroughly enjoyed working with each department here to create the best project possible. It's clear that all the personnel departments want to bring the best project forward for the city and the community. So very briefly, just by background, maybe as a reminder for those who are familiar with City Ventures, we're primarily a residential for sale developer and home builder. All of our projects ultimately become homeownership opportunities, meaning we don't keep any of these as rentals, so all to provide ownership opportunities. Since our inception in 2009, we've been in over 90 cities, over 150 communities, translating to about 10,000 homes built and sold. And our focus is on infill redevelopment of underutilized real estate and vacant land, such as one we see here today. So on screen is but a few examples. In the top left, of course, is the City of Santee, one of two projects we've completed here, both on the west side of town off Mission Gorge. And earlier this year, we had another project in Florida that was approved, working with through plan check and permitting. And here, just a few quick initiatives we take with the city, with all of our homes. Just want to highlight a couple. So solar powered, we include solar panels with each home. They're included in the purchase price, no additional leasing or purchase. We also pre-wire these homes, so taking the 40 amp level two chargers wiring within the garage. So if a homeowner chooses, they can put in a plug or a charger, just takes the heavy lift out of that, out of that process. We've gone through much of this, so I'll try not to overlap too much. But it's been a long time coming. So this project vision, project vision really started late in 2017. We entered contract with the County of San Diego to purchase. Many in this room have collectively made our way through the general plan updates, housing element cycles, rezone, and the Housing Element Rezone Program EIR. And this project is intended to build towards what that housing element and plan had envisioned. We're consistent with the zoning. We're actually towards the lower end of the zoning. If you take out on a gross, we're about, actually under the zoning, so we're about 12.8 to the acre. Once you take out the bio buffer, we end at about 15, so on the lower end of the 14 to 22. You know, it's to be consistent with zoning. Mitigation measures within the Program EIR will be within all those thresholds. Just as a reference, if we build to the 22 to the acre, that ends up being over 400 units. So just to give a sense of the scale. On the project itself, Rachel covered most of it. Base plans consist of two and three bedroom units. Some units will have the option to add a fourth on the first or third floor, depending on individual family needs. Square footages range from mid 13s to the low 2000s, and the intent was to provide a wide range of product types, sizes, and price points that could cater to a wide mix of homeowners. And on the design, you know, the, I'll flip to this page really quickly, but you know, these pictures correlate to generally where those neighborhoods are. And the intent with the two story is really to provide that transition from the existing public frontages and also the residential neighborhoods. So as you step from Walker Trails into the northeast, northeast existing complex, those two stories are the transition before you hit the taller, denser three story townhomes internal to the site. Some public improvements we're making, not to overlap here. So going south to north, the 100 foot biological buffer, that's what the Housing Element Program EIR had called for. That's to protect the San Diego River Trail biological vegetation. Then the San Diego River Trail that connects, that completes the connection from Walker Trails over to the Town Center Park, that will be the full improvements to the existing details with colored concrete, benches, doggy bags, and the fencing. We'll also be lifting the site out of the current floodplain limits. It's about four or five feet up. So by the time we're complete with FEMA, that process, all of these homes will not require flood insurance. And as an additional benefit through that process, so a portion of the Town Center Community Park actually sits in the current floodplain. So when we're done and the map is recorded, or the map revision is complete, the community park will also be out of the existing floodplain. On the frontages, Cottonwood and Walker Trails, those will be full improvements and dedications with sidewalks, streets. And then on the northeast curve, where it borders the Town Center Community Park, we're dedicating a 42 wide, 42 foot wide space. A portion of the existing trail sits in it now, and the remainder towards the parking lot, I guess for future city planning uses. The last bit on the traffic intersection, so I want to clarify, Minji, jump in here if I'm misspeaking, but the, the total, so there's the existing project and the existing plus our project, and those actually don't trigger the need for the second left turn lane. It's when you, correct? It's when you take the existing plus this project, plus any near term projects, which is a list of about 10 to 11 future projects, that's when that volume triggers that need. So we'll be improving it as part of the project. I think our project actually contributes about 40% to that total volume. So just want to make sure that was clarified. And the, well, we'll skip the bond, I was going to try to answer that, but I might butcher that. So yeah, overall, you know, we're really excited about this project. Again, it's to what the Housing Element and the Program EIR had contemplated. We'll be complying with all the mitigation measures. And, you know, we think of this as a great long range plan that both public and private goals were achieved, down to the ultimate homeowner for a great project in the city to live in. So any questions will be around. Thanks again for your time and consideration.
The first public comment is from Truth.
Oh, you know what? Sorry. Do I, is that time over? I had probably the most important part. We could put that back. Just a few renderings, so it helps me at least when we're looking at a 2D, two dimensional plan, just to get a sense of the scale. So this is coming in through Park Center and aerial view. You can get a sense of the three different product types. So on the left, you see a sliver of the two story building. Moving over to a three story, the two different, we call it loose neighborhoods. But you see the difference in the colors, the elevations, the building lines, just to provide some variety. And really, this is a vision of how activated it can be, what we hope this can achieve. Next here, this is, if you see the key in the top right, so this is coming in from the River Trail. And this is one of those pocket parks, those view parks that line the River Trail. Let me pop back to this, actually. So along the San Diego River Trail, we, you know, a lot of these units have access to great open space. So there's view parks that we put throughout the, along the River Trail, and then throughout there's internal green courts. But the rendering here is an example of one of such view parks. So the shade structures, picnic tables, really help to make a great experience here. And then finally, this is a view along Cottonwood. So this is the transition we were, we hope to achieve, where you can see on the right hand side, there's a portion of a three story building, and this is taken from a pedestrian level eye line. And really, the two stories framing the exterior, you virtually can't see the three stories behind it. And that can be further enhanced with the landscaping, as one of the discussions we have with the neighbors. But yeah, so just want to run through those. Those are important, so that was all. Thank you.
Truth?
Third time's a charm. I am actually unsatisfied with the maps that were offered by city staff. It was not clear. So maybe more work. Do a video next time. Do a video, pedestrian level, drone level, whatever you got to do so that everyone can understand, because I need some video evidence, because how am I, how is anyone supposed to believe that only 5 PM has traffic? Does no one go to work in the morning? It's a little weird. I mean, if you, if that's your schedule, everyone's schedule is going to be like that in that complex of who knows how many, oh, 285 stagger packs. Well, then that's very unique. I didn't see any infrastructure improvements, tangible ones, no tangible traffic solutions. I love that a roundabout is a centerpiece of the development. Thank you for proving my point. The red paving, looks like somebody shouldn't even drive on it. It's very confusing. I was trying to figure it out, so I'm glad you showed the picture again, so I could study it and go, wow, nice design, sarcasm. 100 foot buffer for riparian habitat, but known for the backyards. As I said, you don't get a backyard. You get a two car box garage, two to four box bedrooms, storage for the box dwellers, playground, pool, pocket parks for pocket living, because in California, everyone's expected to become a poly pocket puppet. The build baby build theory in action, building California's way to further unaffordability. Plenty of expensive Potem camps will be available soon. Who are they going to fill them with? I don't know. I'm going to skip ahead because the developer said something about, we got 90 something of these developments or cities. It's just like, wow, that's a lot of money. You talk about different price points for a wide mix of homeowners. Really? What's the, what's the starting price point? Do you think I could afford it? Do you think someone my age could afford it? I bet you they can't, unless maybe, I don't know, maybe they're an engineer. They can't work on a city council and afford it. And he called it, the underdeveloped land is what they're after. That's weird, because I call it nature. I thought it was pretty nice looking nature, but I guess it's good to know that the county is who we should blame for selling the land. Buying it, remember, last meeting I was here, I said, if you think them buying up land is a good thing, it's not. Well, here it is in action. They sold it to a developer. So they, I guess, just ruin other cities, ruin cities that are not even in their jurisdiction? I'm not sure what the point is. And the five foot wide bike lanes on Magnolia Avenue, does that, does that mean slime green paint's going to be added? It wasn't in the pictures. Who pays for the repainting if there is going to be the paint? Is it the city? It's not the developer, right? I will say, though, that the overpriced stagger packs are not the worst thing I've ever seen, but the city really should have a plan for traffic congestion, because the roundabouts are not going to help. Highway redesign and expansion would, but when Zandak has a plan to tax every highway, and the state has a plan to track attacks every mile someone drives, I guess that means California's got no hope to have anything nice or sensible. So the least you could do is make sure that there's at least one of those cottonwood trees. I guess that's what you're going to get out of the project. Thank you.
The next speaker is Michael Hoskins.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. Appreciate your time. Speaking to the projects, the information that was given about extending the left turn lane at that residence area, I happen to live in that area. There's about 70 units there, two cars per person. It barely holds enough for those people to, and us to get in there at this point in time without backing up traffic onto Magnolia. It is a blind bridge coming over at 45 miles an hour. So if you think putting more cars there is going to slow down people, it's only going to cause more accidents. Looking at the numbers, 250 feet of added space with 14 foot, 15 feet per car, with a buffer of four feet between each car is about 18.7 feet. That's 13 cars. And 13 cars, when there's 280 residents, two cars per household, that's 580 cars, just for people who live there, not counting all the people who want to cut the lanes, cut out three stoplights on their way over to Mast. Instead of going up Magnolia down through Mast, they want to cut through this residential area and skip two stoplights. So my kids play in the street, they can't anymore with this. Another thing is the community events that are next door, the concerts in the park, the Halloween events, the Fourth of July, all the things that I enjoy walking over and going and visiting will now be cut off, if you will. There will be residential walkthroughs, but where are people going to park? That area is mostly used for overflow parking, as well as evacuation routes in case there is an emergency, people can walk through that or run through that field and area. Secondly, animal life. Thank you for speaking about the animal life. There is a lot of wild animals out there, such as coyotes that hunt in packs. There are gophers, there are hawks, there are many diversified animals out there that call that home, that are now going to have to find somewhere else to move to. In addition to that, the floodplain that was talked about, the water that is going to be flooding that area is now going to be diverted to where? Last time I checked, water flows downhill, and it's going to end up in someone else's backyard. So just because it solves the problem there doesn't mean it's going to be someone else's problem down below. Those are all the things I wanted to talk about. Thanks for hearing from me.
The next speaker is Mary Kate Spahn.
Hi. Thank you for allowing me to come up and chat. I was really looking forward to this presentation, because I thought maybe we would see some light in this. I thought parks, I thought, okay, cool, okay. And first of all, let me just say, I live in the Walker Trails community, so my home backs right up to that. You can see my home look out into this beautiful open space that would be these multi-level, multi-unit townhomes, which I'm not necessarily against. I thought, okay, pool, community parks, let's just wait. Let's just wait and see what it looks like. Maybe we're going to look out into a really cool pool and hear people playing, or maybe we'll see their cool park. That's not at all what we saw tonight, and I'm very disappointed, and I'm scared. Two things. First one, safety. I have a baby on the way, I have a baby at home. Our streets are full of kids. If you think that people are going to go around our community, you're wrong. They're going to cut right through. Also, the math, 285 units, 314 cars? Is that right? There's no way. There's so much of single people living there, and all these multi, like, that, I just, that doesn't make sense. And then watching the traffic flow, their map of where they're going to turn off Magnolia directly through our community where all of our babies are, that's really scary. I'm really not a fan of that. Let's talk about community impact. So I look out onto that field every day. I see a group of people that have dogs almost every morning go on a walk together. They can't do that anymore. It's going to be gone. I see the fireworks go off every year. Where's that going to be? That's been happening for years, so where are they going to do that now? Okay, that's just one day. Let's talk about other things. Family outings, I see families out there on their bikes, walking, hiking, running. Oh, sorry, you can't do that anymore. You have to cut through this community. So I'm just not sure that everything has been considered here. Thank you.
The next speaker is Scott Severs.
Hey, good evening. Thanks for having me. I also live at, on Songberg Way, which is just adjacent to Cottonwood and Walker Trails. And so what some of my neighbors have been saying, and we didn't actually get together and even come together on this, I'm glad that some other people are here, is I have four concerns. The first one would be the traffic that you addressed on Magnolia Avenue. It is kind of hairy when you have to make that quick left and hope a car doesn't rear into you right now. And that's just with 64 homes. So I'm glad you're thinking of doing the double left turn in, but however, it looked like you're going to have a single lane on Magnolia North and South, and I don't know how the overall community is going to handle that. That's going to create big traffic backups. So something to consider there. Secondly, the cut through into Walker Trails. We're private roads. Our HOA takes care of our roads and our sidewalks versus the community. And right now, there's lots of young families. The kids ride in the street, everyone drives slow. It's kind of like a big loop, and so it's very maintained. And we are concerned about people cutting through Walker Trails to get to the south entrance on Cottonwood Avenue. And, you know, people not paying attention, you know, kids are used to being in the street and used to having this very safe place to play. Thirdly, and the biggest one for me is because I look out at the field right now, too, and when I bought our home, I came up here and looked at the map and said, okay, residential 14, 14 per acre, okay. I tried to imagine probably townhomes, but, you know, our developer didn't give us any information on what was, what was coming. So I'm going to be looking out at two-story units across the street from us. And right now, they're going to bring the grade up another four feet, so it'll be additional four feet off of Cottonwood, plus the two-story units. And so they'll be looking right into our backyards, and they'll be looking into our bedroom windows, we'll be looking into their windows. So my biggest concern is if we could get a little more privacy and screening along Cottonwood Avenue. And I was the one that suggested maybe the street tree that we, we put on our side continued on their side, but I really think we need taller trees and trees that are going to scale back their buildings and create some privacy. I'm a landscape architect, so I know trees, that's why I'm talking about that. But currently, on the site plan, it's 14 feet from back of curb to where the two-story...
The next speaker is Margaret Severs.
Oh, can I keep going for you? That's my wife. So she can keep, yeah. Oh, can I just say one more thing? We have 14 feet of proposed landscape buffer. Got it. It's a 22-acre project. We get 14 feet of buffer.
Sir, your time is up. Thank you very much. Save a tree. Please step up to the microphone, ma'am.
No, I'm not a very good speaker, so...
Yeah, I'm sure you're wonderful.
Um, I actually called the developer, because I wanted to save that tree. So I was that person he was referring to. I talk to people all day long, can't do this. But anyways, so I used to live in countryside. I remember when that piece of land was farmland. So my question to the group is, I know KCPQ has a plaque, we do the farm, like, what historical pieces does Santee want to keep in remembrance of it before it was a city? Is there a plan? Because that piece of property was cows and et cetera. And Cottonwood was actually probably, sorry.
You're doing just fine. You're doing just fine. You stand with her.
So what we're trying to say is, we have an 80-year-old tree right behind our house. It's a Cottonwood tree. It's about 25-foot tall, 40-foot wide. It has hawks in it, it has owls in it, it's got a lot of wildlife. And, you know, we met with Michael, very nice man, very willing to work with us, but they said, well, we can't save it. They really could save that tree if they wanted to, if they wanted to, but they'd have to move a unit, and there's no place to put the extra unit. I mean, it's packed in.
And that was, that was another one of our questions, is, does it have to, oh, does it have to have so many units on that parcel? Is it, can they cut those? Can we approve only part of it and then not have all of those? I mean, I'm sure developers here to make money, but is there, is there considering clause to not have so many people in that space? And to keep some of the features of the historical value of what it was, what's existing there? I mean, we're keeping the river, we're keeping the trail, but there's, and the other concern too, is because when you come down Cottonwood, people, like Kate mentioned, when you come to the south, people are going to find different ways to divert the traffic. I don't think those roads were, you know, Cottonwood wasn't meant to have now a stream of cars go through it. So I think we're tapping into a lot of things that are going to get, that are not, that need consideration before it gets built, and traffic is a huge one. Ugh, so sorry. I talk to people all day long.
You're doing just fine.
But yeah, traffic, traffic is for sure is a huge concern.
The final speaker is Lam Nguyen.
My name is Lam Nguyen. I recently moved to Santee, and I, fabulous, I loved Santee, thank you. My concern is a couple things, safety. I live on Walker Trail, and I'm glad the city thinking about the left turn, but my concern is the speed and the traffic flow, because I live there. I hear the ambulance and the fire truck go daily really fast there, and I'm just concerned on the flow going north and south. So, and people are speeding like crazy. And one thing that I moved to Santee, I noticed every intersection, people running in the red light all the time. So I like for the city to consider, what can you do for that? I'm concerned about the traffic coming out left lane, as I, we lived there now for eight months, and I noticed that a lot of the community on Cottonwood cut through or the Park Center Drive to go in and out to save time, which is fine, but now with the new development, I just have a couple suggestions. When you have a condo, like you said...
Sir, can you address the council?
Yeah, 285 units. I'm concerned about the car that you said, right? This is multifamily, two-story, three-story, and I, I used to live in a condo like that, 400 units, and people have four or five car, because you have multiple family living in a unit. And normally, the HOA, where I was, they don't allow you to park there. So all the parking will be taken off of the street. So my concern is where do people park? And will the city or the developer pay for the light at night? Because we do have people coming in and out of the community. And the other thing I'm worried about, which I saw on the, on the plot, is that we, we have trail, and the city required trail, which is beautiful, that's why I moved here. But there are, I'm also concerned about fire zone, and there's a, I don't know, maybe 30, 40 feet of fire defendable space, but the city have not been maintaining them. So now we have a lot of vegetation. So my concern is now we continue to build more, and I'm just worried about fire and safety for the family, for the neighborhood. So I don't want to address that. And then the other last thing is the color scheme. You put in a beautiful Walker Trail community, now CityVenture, I just saw the rendering is all white. Is there any way that you can change the scheme to make the, everything, you know, look better or smooth on the parcel of land? Thank you.
No further speakers.
That's all. Thank you. No further speakers? Counsel? Counsel Marco Val.
I think I'd like to call, well, whoever wants to talk about the traffic again, so we can get clarity now that you've heard the community questions and we've heard the community questions, perhaps we could get a more concise answer around traffic and traffic mitigation and the left turn lane and capacity, and everyone understand that I think a broader definition, explanation about this is needed.
Yeah, one thing I want to clarify, right? I think some of the speakers mentioned that the 314 is what, that's the highest hourly volume, not the 24-hour volume. Yeah, the 24-hour volume is much higher than that. And also, I also heard a comment that the Magnolia will drop to one lane each direction, no, Magnolia will remain two lanes each direction.
Do you want to bring that up, that diagram?
Yeah.
Excuse me?
Yeah.
What is happening? Can you? Thank you. Which one would you like, Minji?
Thanks.
You want proposed?
Yeah.
Okay, one second.
Yeah, this may not be that large, you know, to see, but you can see that really, on Magnolia, it's still two lanes each direction, so that part doesn't change. Yeah.
And I believe there were some other questions regarding traffic, so can you address those as well, from what the audience asked?
Do you want me to jump in, Minji, a little bit? Sure. So I guess, long-term, you know, Walker Trail was always intended to go through and connect up. That's been master planned that way, even when the Walker Trail development was developed. This was anticipated. We didn't have calculations, because of the time, the densities, we didn't have a project. Now, when we do the traffic study, we actually have numbers. So there was no improvements done during the Walker Trail time to add two lanes, because it wasn't needed at that time, but it was always envisioned to also have a secondary access for the other folks that live on Cottonwood, because right now, there's only one official city exit from that. So this has been master planned as part of the whole community area around Town Center Park, ever since the envisioning and master plan of Town Center Park and Park Center. We had it cul-de-sac and stopped, and with the intention of those parcels eventually being developed. And that's why through the zoning process and all of that, and through the land use element, all those rezones happened, because it was anticipated that we could accommodate those traffic volumes. It was just the fact that now we have the calculations, and Minji reviewed them, and we determined that, that there was a need for the extra two lanes. And the only reason why the two lanes are kind of there is because we have a bridge just to the south. We cannot widen the bridge. Otherwise, we could have extended the left turn pocket much further, but due to the limitations of the bridge, that's why we added an extra left turn pocket and a shorter distance. But under Minji's analysis, that's adequate enough to handle the volumes during the peak. There might be some extra cars, but like you said, it's not an exact science. We can't, we can't predict exactly how many cars are going to be there. It's all modeling that's done, and we look at the volume in total and at the peak hours and do an analysis. And then, one of the questions, I think one of the council members, Vice Mayor McNellis brought up, was the storage. Leaving, the one advantage here is that that road doesn't have any of the volumes like Magnolia Avenue, so they can queue up much further all the way towards Cottonwood, where Magnolia, we can't have them in a left turn lane at a 40 mile an hour design speed backing up into the through lanes, if that makes sense.
And what is the speed limit? Because speed limit was brought up.
It's 45 on Magnolia.
And how about on Cottonwood?
Cottonwood's 25, yeah.
Okay, so it's 25. So if people are speeding or going over 25 right now, then they're...
Yeah, and that's going to, that would become an enforcement issue, not a design issue.
Okay. See what else I have. As far as the trees go and landscaping, I was a park director, so I definitely understand trees and landscaping and wanting to save every tree you can. There was a tree at Santee Lakes that I really wanted to save. It was a beautiful sycamore, and I, it cost $50,000. We needed to move it for the project, but I wanted to save the tree, and it would cost $50,000 to move the tree and replant it. And there's no guarantee that it would survive, especially with older trees. They have a shelf life, just like everything. So my recommendation when doing a tree planting plan is to get the tallest trees in a box you can, that, that will survive, you know, when you, when you plant them. So there's a, there's a science to that as well. But I do understand, and as far as the wildlife and my, my home, my backyard is probably closer to, than most to the San Diego River bottom. I'm in the oldest neighborhood, you know, true development in the city of Santee, the very first one built in the 50s. And so yes, I definitely hear the coyotes yipping and running up and down at night, and there's a lot of birds and wildlife and ponds and, and other things that shouldn't be down there. So I would like the fire chief to talk about the defensible space and what we're working on right now, because I'm sure not everybody knows what we have in the FEMA grant, and the process is about that, but also the, the extra defensible space that is already being built into this project. And I think there was one other point that I had about it. Oh, the, the birds in the trees. Whenever you do a development and there are birds in the trees, you, you hire a company like Helix Environmental, and you can't do any work during nesting season, and, you know, the birds are protected, and if they're in a particular tree, you don't do any work until they're gone, and they've nested and flown away, and they will move to another tree. So that's not a big concern for me. I've seen that work time and time again, but I would like our chief to talk about the defensible space.
Yeah, sure, Councilmember Quivell. So the grant you're referring to is the FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant, which that, along with some San Diego River Conservancy grants and potentially Cal Fire, we're working to remove non-native and invasive vegetation, and also that in itself is more flammable than our native vegetation, so remove that citywide, so it's not specific to this project or the area near this project, but it does encompass the river corridor adjacent to and behind this project, where a lot of that work will be taking place. It does meet the latest California fire codes for defensible space, and the city maintains defensible space along that northern boundary. So we are maintaining an adequate defensible space barrier there. That'll be strengthened, and again, with the removal of vegetation through the grant, we'll remove a lot of the hazardous vegetation that's adjacent to it. And again, that's taking place citywide, so.
Councilmember Trotter?
That'll be strengthened and again with the removal of vegetation through the grant, we'll remove a lot of the hazardous vegetation that's adjacent to it. And again, that's taking place citywide, so.
Councilmember Trotter?
Minji, I think you're, you're the star tonight. You want to come up again? I didn't hear anything talking about the other streets like Park Center Drive or Cottonwood. Cottonwood currently connects all the way to Palm Blinn, right? Which exits out onto Magnolia. So ingress and egress coming out through there or through Park Center Drive, we didn't really talk about that a little bit. So can you talk about maybe that in your modeling or what projections are for utilizing the other artillery roads other than just Walker Trail?
Yeah, both those roads, Cottonwood and the Park Center Drive, those, the volume is also reviewed and they have all have capacity, sufficient capacity to handle the future traffic.
Carl, on Park Center Drive, aren't we doing some improvements on Park Center Drive further up near Edgemore?
We actually already, Minji and his team already did parking improvements and we remodeled and did some work up there. If you're talking north of Riverwalk Drive, we added some additional parking. Minji, how many spaces did we add?
If I remember correctly, it's like 46.
A lot of them, you can see if you go out there today, they're being used pretty regularly from the hospital staff and the adjacent multifamily that's already north of Town Center Park.
Is there street parking on Cottonwood now with the new, new street coming in?
Along the street frontage, yes, there'll be parking allowed. Obviously to the north, there's people that do park there. It's dirt because it's not fully improved currently.
Yeah.
And they do park on both sides.
And what about Walker Trails inside of this development and the cross to Magnolia? Is there street parking on there?
Internally, all the, they're all private streets and they have their own parking internally. Ooh, gosh, Minji, do you remember?
Not the Walker Trail project, the actual Walker.
Walker Trail Road.
Yes.
Minji, do you remember if that's no park? I'm sorry, I don't remember offhand if that's parking or no parking.
I, yeah, I'm not quite, quite sure. I think maybe the, Michael, can?
So no parking on that side of Cottonwood, but on the west side of Cottonwood, Walker Trail Drive has.
Walker Trail.
Street parking.
Yeah, and, and as you know, the county is also in the process of selling the property to the north of this.
Correct.
They would also be conditioned to do parking along Cottonwood as well.
Right. So speaking about that, and this is really for public knowledge for the other residents and stuff too, these guys, if you don't know or not, this is two separate county parcels. This particular parcel was sold to City Ventures and the parcel that's directly north of that is also a county parcel. And that's where you see most of the parking happens during the special events and things like that. This particular parcel was actually, I want to say, help me out, Carl, it was about 600 homes on this parcel and 300 on the one the north of that. So it's 900.
Seven hundred, seven hundred, I thought, on this.
Yeah, that was with the previous zoning.
Well, the 700 on this, 700 on this one.
On this one, yes.
And 300-ish on the other one. It was 900 plus homes that the county was trying to, to pack in here.
Yeah.
And sell off.
Yeah, I think, just to clarify, that was R30 zoning, so it was much denser, twice as dense.
Exactly what I was getting to, and Rachel mentioned it in her report, that this city council reduced the density in that area of what the county wanted to do previously. It was 22 to 30 per acre or something. It was the next zoning up, whatever that is, top of my head here, I'm trying to rec, and this is probably five years ago, you guys, so I'm trying to remember the history here a little bit, too. Just kind of give you some background, what the future looks like in this, this whole entire area. The improvements, like you say, obviously we do the fireworks out there right now, so we're going to figure that out, you know, for, for next, probably not next year, but subsequently probably the, the years after that and there. But there is other potential development in this area still to come that the county is trying to sell off that, that parcel. So we're asking about, you know, what we want to keep and we don't want to keep. We don't own the land. The county owns the land, County of San Diego, not the city of Santee. So there's, unfortunately, we don't have authority to mandate who they sell the property to or what they do with the property. We only have the authority to approve the project that is brought in front of us here Traffic, and cutting through, you know, some public streets and stuff like that, that's why I was asking about the other streets, the connectivity that, that we have, you know, within there. Views and things, can we talk about the backyards, the front yards of the cottonwood? We've talked about this on many projects over, over time, where we see, you know, views into people's backyards or no views in there. So I don't know if Rachel wants to talk about that, that elevation difference between the houses on Cottonwood opposed to the, the ones across the street on, I think it's Songbird. Is there an elevation difference to, to those yards?
I'm not exactly sure the elevation of Walker Trails, like what it ended at. I would anticipate a difference just because if they're raising the height. But I do know that the project specifically identified the two stories along that to create that visual difference and that impacted their, their unit count. Obviously, you know, there was the discussion of how there was more units that could be proposed. And when the project started, I, I think they had, I don't know if it was 50 or a certain number, and it slowly dwindled down while they worked on the project design to try and accommodate. But as for views, it, it's probably accurate in that it might be a little bit higher and they could probably see each other. And I, I do know that the applicant has said that they're willing to increase the amount of, you know, trees along Cottonwood to support in that visual buffer and stuff like that.
So when we say on Cottonwood, are we talking about on the, as I'm looking at the map here, the west side of Cottonwood? Are we talking about on the east side of Cottonwood? Because that's the backyards of, of the other homes.
That would be on the, the west, sorry, east, is that?
The west side.
The west side, yeah. On, on the project side.
What is on the, the east side behind that? Is that a masonry CMU wall, a fence, what, the backyards?
Those are masonry walls and then the right-of-way buffer and then the sidewalk.
So there is a sidewalk behind that wall there?
Correct.
And then there is a right-of-way buffer of how many feet, Carl, roughly?
I believe it's 10 feet, like all the right-of-way.
And is there a landscaping on that side of the street currently or proposed behind that wall and between the sidewalk?
There's landscaping there behind that wall and between the sidewalk.
Okay.
Do you want to pull up the last image of the rendering that, from the City Ventures presentation?
While we're pulling that up, I could, you had asked about the elevation. The reason why the elevation is higher is because of the floodplain. The Walker Trails subdivision also had to raise their site three or four feet as well because their site was also within the flood, floodplain. And that's why they're having to raise it to bring the site out of the floodplain for FEMA reasons.
Sir, unfortunately, your time is already to speak. We can't let you speak again. We, we're under deliberation, but understood. We can connect you, and you've already talked to Michael, the developer's representative. You guys can communicate going forward over staff.
It's a nine-foot wall, I just wanted to. Thank you.
Okay, so again, I see grass on this bottom left-hand corner over here. This is the other side of the street behind, is that, is that vegetation or is there actually planting there currently? Is there trees behind these people's yards or?
I believe it's a combination of shrubs and, and ground cover.
Okay, no trees.
No, no trees currently?
There's, there's trees.
This is of the proposed project. This is not of Walker Trails, am I?
Yeah, but I think the question, I believe what you're asking, council member, is right now, the trees that are on the existing Walker Trails development, right, on the east side, is what you're asking. And we're saying there are trees about every 20 feet. And I believe City Ventures had agreed that the trees that they're going to put on the west side, which is what you're seeing, the rendering, will match the ones on the east side. Is that the question?
Kind of. I mean, the matching I don't really care about is the buffering that I'm referring to, right? So when you have an elevation change across the street, obviously the concern was looking across into the backyards or, or into the private views of, of their, the residents' homes across the street. So that's what I'm asking, on the east side, you know, is there some kind of better buffering could be proposed to help the residents on that side for the people who are looking into their backyard? Not so much the beautification of the street.
Yeah, of the two sides.
Right.
Okay.
And then the public right-of-way streets, this is a public standard with street, all that, Carl? And we have streetlights and all that going on here?
Yeah, it's consistent with our public works standard and our street standards.
Okay. Well, I already talked about the density, because this, this is dramatically reduced from what was originally proposed to us.
Yeah.
I mean, it was, it was almost, I know it was over 900 homes.
Yeah.
Between the two parcels, right? And this is like 600, 700? I'm trying to remember this.
Like 923, I think.
Yeah, something like that. It was just absurd.
You did?
Yeah, I think so, right now.
Councilmember Cobal?
Thank you. The discussion made me think of something because I was at the YMCA last week and I saw, I guess, people bidding on the project, doing a site visit at the YMCA in the parking lot. So it triggered the memory that we were, are going to have additional parking for community events. Obviously, I don't know where the fireworks will be shot off eventually or where that's going to happen. Maybe, Nick, you know, or you don't need to say anything if you don't know.
Oh, I have some, some responses for that. We were actually going to be doing the fireworks from the barn lot, the county lot, but because City Ventures was still in the planning phases, we decided to keep it at the current location. But we were ready to go for the county lot and the barn.
Okay. So yes, there will be additional parking. We're, we're building our community center next to the YMCA. And then we're also adding additional parking in that dirt lot in front of the YMCA that is just a dirt lot right now. There's nothing, it's kind of rocky by, in front of the pool. So we're, we're adding those. And we're adding those parking spaces before we even start construction on the community center, which is, is it out for bid? Is it closed?
It's currently out to bid and bid will open and we'll be back before council in, I believe, just November to December.
Okay, great, thank you.
For approval.
Okay, so somebody had mentioned flood diversion. Okay, where's that water go? There's a plan for that. That's where the catch basin is, correct? So all the water is diverted towards that catch basin. Can somebody just explain a little bit about that so that?
So yeah, we, part of the regional water quality control and, and drainage law now, they have to detain and they can't do a net increase to drainage off of a site. So when you look at the map on this, on the side, if you could bring that up, there's a giant detention and water quality basin on the western, southwestern corner. That allows for the water under the peak discharge. I won't get into a lot of details, but it's the first 85 percentile, blah, 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 so that there's no net increase of discharge downstream. And as part of the modeling, the applicants required to work with FEMA and do study and flood analysis along the San Diego River to make sure they're not going to inadvertently affect any of the flood impacts associated with the project. And if they are, they have to do mitigation. They've demonstrated that they're not going to increase that. So they're in the process of right now getting the FEMA determination before we issue or give occupancy and building permits, they have to get that concurrence from FEMA and from the city of Santee.
Okay. So basically what you're saying, all the land, all the water that's there, it's collected on property. It's not allowed to divert off.
Yes, it gets collected and then diverted and slowly discharged back out at a rate equivalent to what it would do today.
Into the aquifers, basically?
Yes.
All right. So it's not, it's not that it just goes away. It's not become somebody else's problem. It, it actually is captured on property now and diverted to a basin, an underwater basin that gets recharged into the water, into the aquifers. And I, I get that because that's a, that wasn't always the case. There was a lot of times where exactly that water, just it went someplace else and it was somebody else's problem. Don't do that anymore. It's not, that's, that's against the law. So signals, there's, is the signalization there at Magnolia going to be sufficient for the additional vehicle? Like, there is a signal there, right?
Yes.
Yeah. And it's currently that you, no, you don't think that's, there's going to be any problems with that?
No.
People are saying that there's, it's difficult already to get out of there, coming with cars coming down Magnolia. I think they're referring to making, making the right-hand turn. Or people running the red light, which is, which is an enforcement issue. We've got, we, we already know about that. But making, you know, if they're running a red light when they're trying to make a left, that's, that's pretty crazy, too. So I don't know, maybe when there are more cars there lined up, maybe it draws more attention because right now it's, you don't actually have a lot of cars. I don't ever see cars queued up to make that left-hand turn there, just because there's just not a lot of development there yet. So that could be a reason that people aren't paying attention and just blow through the light. Or they're just jerks and blow through lights. I'm not sure which, but either way. So you, you feel that the signalization there is sufficient?
Correct. Yeah, signal timing can be easily adjusted to accommodate, you know, increase in traffic.
Okay. Thank you, Minji. And then parking, 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 parking. This may be for the developer, if you want to come on up. Our, once again, and then it's just the reality of life. Somebody had said it or alluded to it. There's more than two cars. I mean, you got a two-car garage for each, for each unit, is that correct?
Two-car garage.
Do you allow them to store stuff?
No. So our, we understand this is a, a common concern. Our CCNRs are written very strongly, those who have lived in HOA, is I think one of the neighbors here. But our CCNRs are written such that cars have to be stored in the garages, no storage of personal space, personal.
Storage.
Storage.
Yeah, I know what you're getting.
And then guest parking is reserved for guest parking only. And so similar to enforcement, our CCNRs are written such that anybody can sort of report this to the management company and they have the ability to implement fines. And that, if aren't paid, ultimately becomes a lien on the home. So there are enforcement mechanisms in place. And we understand the importance of making sure everyone uses the garages as intended. So our CCNRs are, as a standard, is written that way.
And then you, you actually brought up my next question. How many, how many guest parking spaces are there?
75 total. I believe it's 72 required. So we're, we're meeting, we're exceeding slightly the, the guest parking requirements.
All right. And then this will be for staff. Thank you.
Yeah.
What are we going to do to keep people from parking, from taking up all the parking at Town Center Park East? Because that's what they're going to do. They're going to, they're going to park in, in that lot. Same thing that happens with condos right across the street from the YMCA. They all park in that lot. And makes it difficult for patrons to actually get into Sports Flex and, and the YMCA oftentimes because people are parking their vehicles there. Even the complex over by what used to be the Christian College, that parking lot is Park One, yeah. It's not Park, Park One is the, or the apartments. It's the condos, the condos right behind it. Those are the ones that, Park One has done a really good job somehow of keeping everybody in their, in their park. But the other condos, there's a ton of parking being utilized in the, in the Christian College, what used to be the Christian College parking lot.
I guess from our standpoint, the, the park is public parking, similar to the road. It's kind of a first come, first serve in the parking lot. It's there to serve the public and it's, that's what it's there for, is a public use to provide parking. It's not reserved per se for the park itself, so residents can park there.
We don't allow for multi-day parking, though.
No, but I think we just don't have a robust parking enforcement program in our public parks because it is, as you've mentioned, in some locations, it is a problem. And I guess that's something is, if a problem does arise, that's something we'll have to bring back and address.
Okay. And Councilmember Trotter also made my comment that this list was, I remember this was going to be apartments. These were going to be a lot of, and low-income apartments to market-rate apartments and a mix thereof, which is why they were doing, it's getting such a huge density. And we were talking almost 1,000 units between these two lots. And I just, I remember losing my mind over that. So I appreciate the fact that, you know, we've come down significantly from that. It's still a lot, I get it, it's still a lot. But that's what the county was really trying to do. It was a lot of work and negotiating to try and get this, down to this. So this may not be what any, what everybody wants, totally get it, but it's a heck of a lot better by far than what it could have been. And I thank staff for, for working so diligently on, on making, making it what it is. And I think, I do actually think, I disagree with the gentleman, I'm sorry, but I think the, the renderings were actually, were quite attractive. I think the, the units are quite attractive. I think they've done a good job with, with making sure that around the building, it looks, there's, there's nuances till it's not just looking at, you know, from the back of a project, you're just looking at a big white wall. of a project, you're just looking at a big white wall. There's decorative architecture that's being utilized, and I, I do like those different elevations and the way that they're, they're doing that. So it's not just, it's not, it doesn't look like a prison. This is, I also like the fact that they're condos, so they're purchasable. If somebody likes it, then they're gonna buy it. And market will determine. So versus apartments, it's just, I got no place else to go, I need an apartment. So I am in support of this project, and I move staff recommendation.
I'll second it.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, everybody.
You guys did good.
Thank you. You may be the only one that thinks that right now, but thank you. Next item is a Type 1 fire engine refurbishment discussion. Chief Wallace.
Good evening, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the council. So the item before us tonight is a discussion to consider refurbishment of one of the fire department's existing Type 1 fire engines. Pictured here is the engine in question. This is V138. It's our 2005 Pierce Aero XT. It's currently our primary reserve fire engine in the fleet. If you remember back in 2023, when AP Triton presented the Community Risk Assessment and Long Range Master Plan Report, a couple of the recommendations centered around the fleet, one of those was to consider the immediate apparatus order for replacement of Engine 5 and Engine 205, and to move those engines into reserve status. And that report also noted that both reserve engines that were currently in the fleet were in poor condition and considered unreliable. And pictured here are those two frontline engines, still V157 is frontline engine 205, soon to become Engine 20, and V166 is Engine 5. So the current status of our fleet, we do have a new Type 1 engine on order. It will replace Engine 205. It will become Engine 20. That engine was ordered in July of 2022, and we're expected to take delivery this upcoming December. One of the two reserve engines cited in the report is unreliable, was a 1996 engine, V83, that was declared surplus and sold. We currently do not have any apparatus on order for replacement of Engine 5, and we currently have the one Type 1 reserve engine, which is V138, the engine we're looking to refurbish. We will be putting V157 into reserve status when the new engine arrives this December and goes in service. So why are we coming to you to consider refurbishment? This spring, we asked for proposals to both refurbish one of our existing engines and also to purchase a new engine that would be comparable to the current fleet. The, the cost of refurbishment came in at an estimate of about $760,000. The new engine order quote is just over $1.2 million. And then the delivery timeline on the refurbishment is approximately six to nine months, whereas the new engine order is right now quoted at a 49 to 52-month build time. Do you want to note that the refurbishment included in that price is a 15% contingency fund, about $68,000, that's there for any unforeseen extra issues that come up in the refurbishment process, and that both these quotes do include all the anticipated upfitting we would need for putting them into service, including new mobile radios and graphics. And the expected service life of a refurbished engine is comparable to that of a new engine and is expected to be at at least 15 years. So what's included in apparatus refurbishment? So it's a complete rebuild of the original engine, a remanufactured transmission. They would replace all of the seats, the emergency lighting, other safety components like seat belts. They would repaint the entire apparatus and new graphics that would match our more recent fleet purchases. And the refurbishment includes a one-year warranty on the work done under refurbishment, and then new components that are bought still have the new component warranty extended to the city. So if we were to move forward, you know, what our fleet status would be after the refurbishment of the engine, our frontline Type 1 engines, we would still have Engine 4, which is pictured, that's a 2016. Engine 5 would be this refurbishment of V138, so it'd be, you know, a refurbished engine coming in December of 2026. And then Engine 20 will be the new Type 1 being delivered this December. Our two reserve apparatus would be V166 and V157, the 2014 and 2011 engines that the AP Triton report was recommending to move into reserve status. So with that, our recommendation is to get your direction to return with a formal proposal for the refurbishment of V138, our 2005 Pierce Aero XT. And if so directed, we'll return with a formal proposed contract and funding options for council consideration. And I'm available for any questions.
Well, first, I want to know who put this together. Did Venus put this together for you?
Venus provided a little guidance. She provides guidance for, throughout my daily operations.
I tell you, this, this is your best report you put together so far, so.
Thank you.
Actually, I appreciate a couple of things in there to point out to you, that having the contingency already built into the overall price and having a total package, you know, brought to us, you know, I appreciate that, because that tells us what the whole picture could be. You know, it's very, so I had a couple of questions and a couple things I wanted to ask you about. So we have the new engine coming at the end of, the end of this year, right? And that was purchased in 2022?
Ordered July of 2022.
And we know what the timeline is now, up to 52 months for, for a new engine, and the cost is at 1.3 million. So where are we at with the, the next one? Because that's where I'm kind of going with the plan to go forward. This replaces your 2011 engine. I'm going by year, not the numbers. So yeah, and the next oldest one is Engine 5 at 2014. So subsequently, 15 years tells me 2029, you need to replace it.
So the 2014 will go into reserve status when this refurbished engine comes. That'll take the place. Our oldest frontline at that point will be Engine 4, which is the 2016.
Okay.
So that is something we'll need to start looking at, at budgeting. And, you know, we're hoping that, that prices stabilize and timelines come down on new engine ordering. You know, a consideration definitely could be refurbishment of an additional engine. Having the two reserves gives us a little flexibility there. You know, this will be our first complete refurbishment of an engine. It's part of why we wanted to bring it to you, you know, for the discussion before having staff engage in the actual working on the contract.
I know it was in our report, and you didn't speak about it, but Heartland has done this numerous times already.
Sam Miguel has done a couple.
Sam Miguel, I apologize.
Sam Miguel just received two back, and they've been very happy with the product.
And how long have those been in service?
About a year for one, and closer to six months for the other.
So a little-
They've had a little time to-
Little trial period still on the-
And this has been done a lot more by agencies, both in and out of California, over the past couple of years, as these prices have escalated like they have, and the timelines for new engine delivery have continued to increase. So.
I think optimistically, we can say maybe the timelines will come down, but I don't think the prices are going to come down, you know, at this point, right? So I, I think this is a great option. Yeah, yeah. I think prices are, are what they are. I think timelines are possible to come down. That's my concern, chief, is that we look at, obviously, what's the next replacement, and obviously the, the funding for that. I know last Wednesday at the River Conservancy, we just gave away, when I say gave away, prop for money, and one of them was to Verona, a million dollars for a brand-new Type 1 engine. So have we, are we looking again, other options of how to get funding mechanisms for-
We certainly will, and look into additional grant funding. They did just, were a majority contributor for our new Type 3 engine-
I know.
-that just came. So we have used them-
They weren't the, the other agency-
The combination of them and the Fire Foundation.
Yeah, the Fire Foundation was the majority, right?
They were, basically it was a one-third split between us, the three entities, us and the two of them. So it is definitely something we'll consider and look at, what grant funding could be there for a Type 1, kind of evaluate this refurbishment process. You know, one thing with 138 is, our mechanics have done an assessment of it. The engine itself, the cat engine in there, is a very sound engine, so rebuilding that makes sense. The frame is very good. We would certainly want to look at an assessment of 157 and see how good a candidate we believe that could be. And also just look at how this experience with the refurbishment goes, so we have a little of our own history. But that's definitely a consideration we could bring back.
Yeah, because like I said, I look at these years, and, you know, 2011, 2014, 2016 was the last time we got an engine. So we have a bit of gap between receiving a new one here in 2025. Almost, almost 10 years.
We do. And in between there, we did replace Brush 4 as well as Truck 4. So we had, we had the three Type 1 engines pretty close together, and then we had Brush 4 and Truck 4, which were substantial purchases.
I guess my last question is timeline. So you said frontline apparatus is 15 years is the expectation on the frontline? And then they go into reserve for how long?
Well, so for Type 1 engines that are heavy use, the recommendation is 10 years frontline and five years, five years reserve for a total life of 15. We have been, you know, is that 2011 is still in frontline status, that 2014 is in frontline status. So we have been exceeding those.
Right, that's what, that's what I'm going to say. It actually makes it even worse, what you just said.
138 is now a 20-year-old engine that we're considering, so.
And how long has that been in reserve, since 2016?
That one has been in reserve since 2016, when Engine 4 arrived.
Yeah, that makes sense. All right, you guys.
Counsel, we do have one speaker on the item. Oh, sorry about that. Truth? Sorry.
I like when things work out, and then you can tell a joke, horrible job you guys are doing. You didn't even take public comment. Oh, man. Had to wait for Dustin to talk forever. He had good points, though. I appreciated that. That means you're doing a good job. Because I was going to bring up the grant, because the city of Lemon Grove got a grant from the state, I believe. So they got a new fire truck. But I don't know what you guys are going to do about it. They might go, ah, Santee's got enough money. They don't need her, they don't need their tax dollars back. I support whatever works best, which I didn't hear like a concrete opinion. Maybe their, maybe their first refurbishment was the concrete opinion, but it didn't sound sure. I need a, I need confirmation. And were pictures included at the agenda packet? Because I don't remember seeing them. She had a really nice picture of the fire truck, and you had the, the drive-in sign lit up. I just feel like that could trigger some people, you know, certain people, I just could have been triggered, could have had a riot on your hands. But I do want to give an opinion. I've been wanting to give an opinion for a while. I just keep forgetting. But my opinion on the Santee fire trucks, which is, despite apparently being 20 years old, some of them, they're some of the best-looking fire trucks in the county. You didn't know that? There you go. I particularly like the American flag design, and so don't change the design unless it's going to be for the better. And I'm not talking about the yellow, the ugly yellow ones. That wasn't the one I was thinking of. I was thinking of the red ones. Those ones I like. Thank you.
Is it? All right, that was just a, we just wanted to get some feedback, whether you should bring this forward. I, for one, think, yes, let's bring this forward. Let's-
I agree.
Yeah. We don't need a motion on that, right? I didn't think we needed one, just-
We're fine either way.
Yeah, you got, you just, you just wanted to feel it up. Yeah.
Right.
Bring it back to us.
It was a great presentation, because you literally answered all my questions in it. So thank you.
All right, item number 10. Selecting a voting representative and alternates for the League of California Cities Annual Conference and Res- and Resolution canceling the regular meeting of the city council scheduled for Wednesday, October 8, 2025. Your city clerk?
Good evening, Vice Mayor and councilmembers. The League of California Cities Annual Conference is scheduled to take place from October 8 through October 10 in Long Beach. The League has given notice to the city that it is time to select a voting representative and alternates for the General Assembly meeting at the conference. Mayor Minto and councilmembers Hall and Koval are registered to attend and would be considered for selection. Selection of the voting representative and alternates must be completed by council action. Additionally, with a majority of the council registered to attend the conference and no agenda items from a staff perspective needing to come forth at the October 8, 2025 regular city council meeting, staff would recommend that council adopt the resolution canceling the October 8, 2025 regular meeting.
Any speakers?
We do have one speaker, Truth.
You guys know you want to hear me talk again. I'd argue a regular meeting will achieve more than anything the League of Delusional Cities, Cal Cities, will ever achieve. I think the trip to Long Beach is a waste of tax dollars. It has changed nothing that the state crazies have passed, are passing, and will pass, including SB 79 and SB 771. If anything, you guys need to discuss how to get the average Californian to care enough to work to change things rather than complain to their screens, how to unrig elections from new scum and dominion, and how to find and support normal human beings who can replace the crazies currently occupying the seats. Republicans have failed miserably at all of these necessary changes. Why? Democrats have allowed themselves to be hijacked by progressives, AKA communists. Why? Is it true that there is a California disease where no matter what label one chooses, the result is still the same insanity, where everyone repeats the cult mantras? I can say that, being from elsewhere. That being said, I approve of the three. One, being sent to deal with any crazies outside of city limits. These three, I would say have sense, but because John and Ron are not here, they don't count. Just Laura, congratulations.
No further speakers.
So I, I'm supportive of the voting members, obviously. The mayor's represented us, Cal Cities and the alternates there. But I'm, I'm not in support of council in the meeting, because the meetings are for the people, not for, not for us. You know, we're up here elected to represent the people, and the people want to come talk to us, I think we should have meetings still. Obviously, knowing that we can't vote on anything, so.
So for a little bit of background on that, I had offered not to attend, to be here for the meeting. And, and that's why I, it literally was a, a last-minute decision, because there wasn't enough items. And maybe it's because we have a transition with city manager happening next month as well. I don't know. But there's not enough business to warrant, there was just consent items that could be moved to the next meeting. So that's when I decided to go. And so I don't want to, if there was substantial business, anything like what was on tonight's agenda, I certainly would not go. But it's consent items only at this point, and I checked before I said I would go.
Yeah. I agree with Councilmember Trotter. I, you guys are fine as the, as, you know, you guys want to beat your head against that wall, knock yourselves out.
I think the meeting.
Fair enough.
Beat, beat, beat everybody out, so, yeah. Beat their heads.
But agreed that I, I don't, I've said for quite some time, this reason, I don't think everybody should be gone during a meeting. It's, we, we have meetings scheduled. They've, they're, they're always on, on schedule. We've, I don't, I don't see that that's, that's a, the League of California's cities is a worthy reason to cancel a meeting. I really don't. So I'm not, I'm not in favor of canceling the meeting either.
And you would like me to cancel the conference and come to the meeting, then?
That's up to you.
Well, I've already checked, and since it's only consent items, I'm not going to. But if that was a concern, I wish you would have let me know sooner than tonight.
Didn't know you were all trying to get, get going on another, on another adventure.
I don't, it don't matter. I mean, the staff has items or not. I mean, I guess they don't, but I still think we should be here for the people.
Are you saying that from now on, you want to make a policy where we never cancel a meeting for something like this and bring it back?
That would be something I would like to talk about. Yeah.
I think that's an appropriate question to ask in the future.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't think that that's something that should just have been done unilaterally by anybody. So this is, this is something that should be discussed before, before plans are made, not after they're made.
Have we not done this before, ever? I, I seem to recall we have canceled them, because we had three people go to the League of California Cities.
I know we've, we have canceled the meeting, because there was nothing, there was nothing on.
That as well.
And staff, and that's the reason that we started doing that in the summer month, was because staff was saying, it's slow during this time, people want to take their vacations, and that's the reason we started doing a regular canceling.
Besides, besides a summer meeting, we've never canceled.
Not that I can recall. Not that I can recall.
I'd have to go back and research that on us, staff.
And we can, then maybe, and when we bring that back as an item, we can research if it's ever happened before as well.
Yeah. So once again, it's, I don't, I mean, if there really is nothing on that agenda, but was there nothing on the agenda because we were stacking it so that we could cancel the meeting? Or is there really nothing ever on that agenda?
On the planning calendar before this was considered, the, the planning staff had was approval of the minutes, approval of payment and demands. There was one tentative item for community services, which I think it was the declaration to end the emergency. But I, I don't know if that's even ready to go forward yet for their, their work in the defensible space. So it was only tentative on there. Those were the three items on the planning calendar from a staff side.
Light agenda.
What does, what does November and December look like, you guys? Because we already have a meeting canceled in November and December, too.
Yeah.
A regularly scheduled meeting.
So from the planning side, we only have one potential project that's going to go in December. So we didn't move anything because of October?
I can speak from engineering. We had no items from engineering planned or scheduled for October 8. But we plan our, our long-term schedule, because we already know in December and November, we only have one meeting. So we already pre-plan all of our items in advance, knowing that, that case. Yeah, and the community center's going to be a big one. That'll be coming for you. And there's a couple other minor items in November and December for project closeouts and standard acceptances and consent items. But none of them have to go on October 8, and none of them were scheduled to go on October 8.
For community services, most likely in December, we'll bring an amendment to the Safe Santee contract to add more cameras in our trail systems. So we're trying to aim for December at that timeframe. And to address James's commentary regarding the end of declaration, we could do that. Within the next, we could do that in the next meeting. We do that the following meeting. Doesn't really have a preference.
For finance, we have the Development Impact Fee annual report that I present to you guys. That could be in, in either meeting in October. Also, we'll have a, a contract award for ERP IT consultant help. But that won't be ready until probably, at least the earliest would be the second meeting in October, but probably in November.
For fire, just a presentation on the update on progress on the AP Triton report. That presentation was scheduled to go October 22, when we have a full council, and then likely two consent items for a grant acceptance.
for a grant acceptance and a couple purchases that are just over the 50,000 threshold.
Well, I think October 8 sounds like a good time for work planned for the building department.
HR will have the personnel rules update or approval in November.
Gary talked about it today, so he knew.
I won't be quite ready with it by that point.
All right. So we have a conundrum here. I just, I, I, at a principle, I don't like this. But if there really is nothing on the agenda and nothing needing to be moved around in order to make this happen, then I'm okay with skipping that meeting.
One thing I might add, Vice Mayor, in 2019, when council adopted their 20, LPM 2019-1, which is the policy for city council meetings and everything of that nature, we then implemented the fact that meetings have to be canceled by resolution. Prior to that, I don't know if that was necessarily the case. So if there was in the past a cancellation due to lack of an agenda, it might not have had to come before the council. It could have been a city manager or mayor-led effort then. But now with our current policy, that's the reason for the resolution of canceling the meeting.
Okey-dokey. So you want to make a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion to adopt staff recommendation.
And I'll second it.
With exactly who is our, just mayor is the voting representative and?
Yes.
Okay.
As it currently sits.
Okay.
You're just gonna, you guys were just gonna redo it the exact way it was before, correct?
As far as the voting members for the League of Cities, it's the same.
Same.
Yeah.
Yeah. You got that? All right. Oh, do we have a second? Do I second it? Okay, I'm like, wait a minute. You made the motion. I knew that part.
Motion carries.
You've gotten right all night. You, you did the motion instead of a second, opposed to your counterpart to the leftover. There are seconds to everything before a motion's put in place.
All right. Any, let's see, where we are now at?
No public comments.
No public comments? Okay. Then. No, just nothing. All right. Any council reports? Councilmember Koval? Councilmember Trotter?
No report, sir.
None from me. City manager?
No report.
City attorney, you did such a great job tonight.
Thank you. I had no report to just add to the gift.
City clerk?
No, sir.
And then I guess we are officially adjourned.